Good afternoon, this is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. I am Councilman Schleifer, Chair of the Committee. To my right is Council Vice President Middleton. To my left is Councilman Conway. We're going to get started with two executive appointments, both for the BMZA. I'll start with EA twenty-three-dash-zero-two-one-two, David Marcosi. If you could please step up to the podium. Tell us about yourself and why you'd like to serve on the BMZA. You've got to push the right button until your microphone lights up red.
All right, good afternoon. Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name's David Marcosi. I started out with an architectural practice. I've graduated from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte with two degrees in architecture. I have been practicing in Baltimore ever since my graduation. Been a local Baltimore resident from birth. And I had given the opportunity to sit on the zoning board and I was humbled about the opportunity. I feel that I've always wanted to become part of supporting the city in any effort that I can, whether it's from a community standpoint or even at a zoning standpoint. I feel that my professional experiences here in the city will only support the purposes of the Board. And I look forward to helping out any way that I can with the zoning board administration. So, in a nutshell, that's kind of my intentions. I do, again, I do look forward to helping out and support as much as I can and in any community and all communities of Baltimore.
Thank you. So, my first question, I'm sure if you've been following, the BMZA has had a lot of challenges lately.
Uh huh.
You know, we have grown to sort of seen the consistency of how things have gone historically. And then all of a sudden, there was a full 180. Lights were turned off. No more variances granted that normally would have gone through and no community opposition, no neighbors oppose, basic stuff. And that's been a big challenge for me, I know for some of my colleagues as well, because as it is, we have enough challenges in the city that when we have homeowners who want to invest in their own property, who want to improve their property, increase the value of their property, which increases our tax base, that they should be able to do so within reason if they're not impacting anybody else. And so that's been a challenge. I just wanted to kind of get your take on variances, just in general, high level, whether or not you think that people should be able to get variances with, you know, when there's no opposition and it's a reasonable request? Or do you share the opinion of some that variances should be near impossible to obtain?
Sure. So, variances are offered for a reason, I believe. Now, we have a zoning code that should be very strictly enforced. I think that variances, should they be in support for community development, should they be in support for the health and safety of the community and the people of the community, that variances should be approved in specific situations. I think that proof for having the request for the variance is very important and the Board is exactly there to hear those purposes and make that decision. So, to answer your question, I think that yes, there should be a reason for variances to be approved on certain specific basis.
Okay, thank you. Because, you know, I'm dealing with one right now and fortunately, it just got approved by the Planning Commission and now it's got to come to the Council and go through that process. But going through that rezoning process is far more timely and far more expensive. And most residents in Baltimore, you know, don't have that extra money to just go and throw down the drain. And there's a reason why we have the zoning board. And so I have a constituent right now that's, you know, going to be spending over $10,000 to do something that the BMZA should have just approved, just to allow, you know, his elderly parent to move in with him and to have those things. So I would just implore you to really think about the big picture when you're on the BMZA, to understand that people have a choice whether or not they live in the city or not. And if you don't grant variances when they need them, for whatever reason they need it for, they'll just pick up and move. And, you know, we can't afford to lose any more residents than we've already lost. You have a question? Council Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, just to kind of piggyback on what you just said, and a key thing that you had mentioned was, in a sense, the importance of community and the makeup of the community, what's asked of residents. And sometimes the, they make, the MBZA makes decisions that are not cohesive with what the community wants. And for things like parking lots of churches, and there's just so many different things. And sometimes I find that members of some of these boards don't fully know all the, we have so many different communities and they're all completely different. And that should be really a good way of your decision. And you gave me a hint, in a sense, of your statement that those things are important to you.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if you want to add to that comment of what I just said?
I mean, I like to speak. So, absolutely, I mean, I think, again, I agree with you. Baltimore is a community-by-community city. And then every community's voice should be heard when it comes down to situations that concern their community, for sure.
And you said you're an architect?
Yes, ma'am.
So that even weighs more of your understanding because of the rich history we have here with our architecture and just some areas are just very historical and have lots of meaning. And then there's others that are going through a sincere revitalization. And your opinions really weigh a lot on the future of our city, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate you, David, for, you know, wanting to step up for this Board. I've got two very, very simple questions that are, of course, loaded, so. When it comes to considering conditional uses where there is an environmental or a public health concern, where do you think the zoning board can take those considerations in? How would you typically think about those situations?
Certainly. I mean, anytime that environmental health is a concern, it should be taken very seriously. Again, I feel like the zoning Board's, one of the primary responsibilities is to make important decisions, whether for variances and conditional use purposes, again, in support for the community. So I think that, again, it's specific, project by project, application by application. But I would very, very seriously be concerned if it's an environmental health issue.
I appreciate that, thank you. My other question is about MOUs. So, in instances where applicants are looking for renewals or otherwise and have an MOU with the community and have not met the terms of that MOU, how do you think, do you think the zoning board can consider the compliance of that MOU in its consideration to either renew or reject an application?
You said if it's not in compliance?
If it's not in compliance.
Then I would be concerned about that. I mean, you do have to meet all the checkpoints and you do have to be in compliance.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Next up, EA twenty-three-dash-zero-two-one-three, Elizabeth Cornish, a member of the BMZA.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
All right, we want to start with, tell us a little bit about yourself?
If you'd like to.
You tell me.
Yeah, tell us about yourself, why you're interested on, to serve on the BMZA.
Yeah, first, I was very honored to be nominated as somebody that's worked in community development for my career here in Baltimore. I've recognized that there's a lot of really important processes that we need to take people through. There's a lot of opportunities for the community to provide input into the future of our city, including the built environment. And so I'm just really excited to be part of that process and be able to serve my city in that way. A little bit about me, I moved here to Baltimore in 2015. I led an advocacy organization called Bike More that focused on transportation policy. In 2021, I now work for South Baltimore Gateway Partnership where I run, where I manage a portfolio of projects that impact primarily parks and public spaces. So I work very closely with city agencies on ensuring that our investments are going into the places where are going to be most useful to residents. I coordinate a lot with grassroots community organizations in South Baltimore, as well as developers, and I lead different capital projects. So for example, right now, I'm leading the construction of the Carroll Park Recreation Center. So yeah, so I'm just really interested in this as a topic, from a policy perspective and from an ability to have the community have an opportunity to weigh in and to have architects and developers and private property owners really make the city a great place to live.
Thank you. And so, along the same lines of what I was asking David before, what's your, if you can just give us a little insight into what your feelings are regarding, like issuing variances, especially, I'm talking about the extreme situations in either way, but, you know, the general day-to-day where communities in support of it, neighbors are in support of it, somebody wants to enclose a porch or, you know, build a handicap ramp or something like that.
Yeah, I think the impression, I was able to attend my first BMZA meeting two weeks ago, which was very informative. I really enjoyed it. And it gave me a really good perspective, sitting on that side, of some of the variety of challenges that people bring to the BMZA. I think variances need to be thought through carefully, because we understand that as a quasi-judicial board, all of those decisions set precedent. And so we want to be very thoughtful in issuing variances. I'm definitely looking to the guidance of the attorneys that staff the BMZA to make sure that the decisions that we make on the zoning board are in adherence with the current laws. Given that you talked about the changes that the BMZA had to make, you know, that wasn't necessarily, to my understanding, something that the BMZA necessarily was leaning towards, but it was court ordered or it was the courts intervened and said, "We need to come up with a different process." And so I think for me, I'm always open and I think it's very important to listen to the community and certainly support homeowners and private developers in pursuing projects. Baltimore's also a really challenging city in terms of architecture and space available. And so, we need to look at ways that the zoning code might work against some of those initial goals of the community. And so that's where a variance can be really helpful. But I do think that we should be supportive of property owners to pursue and make sure that they're using zoning as the right tool for the outcome that they want. And so that includes community members. So, if somebody's opposed to something, that may not be, the zoning board may not be the place where they're going to get the results that they want or the ability to be heard in the way that they want, given the parameters of a quasi-judicial board. So I also really appreciated a couple of weeks ago where we were able to talk to community members and say, "Why don't we postpone this? Sounds like you've got some other things to think through." To make sure that everybody has the outcome that they desire and that they have an opportunity to feel heard.
Right. I mean, I hear you. I think the thing that works against the city the most, underlying issue is our population. We used to be close to a million people, we're now down to under 600,000. If we continue to drop, we lose certain statuses as a big city, which has some pretty severe consequences. And so, you know, we should be, I mean, the way all the Council people work on a day-to-day basis is trying to find ways to address the needs of our constituents and, you know, what's in the best interest of the city. And so, you know, what I find is that a lot of times, you know, lawyers might, you know, get, try to give you a reason why you can't do certain things. I mean, there's countless times we had a law department, we're coming here and say, "Hey, you, you know, we shouldn't do this, we shouldn't do that." And if you continue to push, you find a way that you can legally do that. And so, you know, I, one of my other things that just passed, the Planning Commission, was a BMZA bill that will make significant changes, and I'm all for that. But I think that, at the same time, that's, the BMZA is just one piece of it. And so if you choose not to do something that really should be done, it doesn't mean that it doesn't happen. It just means that that constituent now has to spend a lot more money to go through a rezoning process, and it's going to end up as the same result. So, you know, we as elected officials, we have to answer to our constituents. So if we support a project, you have to explain why you did support that or not. The BMZA, you guys really only answer to us in this forum, and then once we approve you, you know, there's really no recourse at that point. And so, you know, we're held accountable to that. So when you have a situation where the council person is supportive and the community is supportive and the neighbors are supportive, I think that at a time in our city where we're struggling to just meet our most basic financial obligations, that it would be, it behooves us to find a way to make things happen as opposed to finding a way to not do certain projects.
Absolutely. Yeah, I don't think anyone that wants to serve the city wants to be one of those people that stops progress from happening. It's certainly not why I get involved. So yeah, serving the needs of the residents comes first.
We have a few of them, but that's not the form for it.
Well, it's unfortunate. But, yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's what all of these things are for, right? Whether it's Council, BMZA, Planning Commission, it's in service of the future of the city and what the communities want to see.
Right. And I'm sure you guys will, but I just would ask you to also serve with compassion. So when you have people that come to the BMZA, I had somebody with ALS that wanted to remain in their house after their diagnosis, and they were denied to be able to build a bedroom, ground floor addition to their house, so that they can wheel right into it. And it was a small house, they were denied. And so, you know, it's very problematic when you force people from their house, simply because you want to be a hard line on, you know, "This is our interpretation of this rule or that rule." And they can't afford to go through the rezoning process, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, and I'm thankful that we have all these processes in place. So I definitely plan to uphold them and to be an advocate for them.
Okay. Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got the same two questions. I'll start with the first, regarding conditional uses and how much the Board can consider conditional uses that have an impact on public health or the environment. What's your stand on that?
I think, you know, it is anyone's job that serves, especially in a legislative or judicial capacity, to put the health and safety of residents first and foremost. And so I think when those cases come before us at the BMZA, they require careful and special consideration. I think the other way that I hope that I can be helpful is if BMZA ends up not being the tool to meet those objectives for what a variety of reasons, I want to be a good advocate for the community and make sure that there's still an opportunity for them to be heard and to get the results that they want. And be, you know, I think there's also a role to be an educator and say, you know, this is a process that can help you get to the way that you want things to go. So, but yeah, health and safety is first and foremost, and it's something that I have to think about and make hard decisions around every day in my job.
Yeah. I asked that question because I've dealt with a situation within my district, you may or may not be familiar with it, in which, you know, it really was the BMZA ultimately that got to make the decision. And everything thereafter is just a checkbox to happen. So it's really important that, you know, the folks on that Board have a strong understanding of the real power that you yield and really thinking about the public health impacts of certain decisions like that. So my second question is actually around MOUs and the ability to consider MOUs and whether or not we approve, you know, certain decisions, certain applications.
Yeah. So, you know, I served on the Board of the Charles Village Civic Association for a number of years. I've certainly been in, on the neighbor's side of establishing MOUs with different organizations, and I think they're a really powerful tool. At the very least, they bring everybody to the table to have a really healthy conversation and develop those relationships. And at the most, they're a tool for accountability. So I think understanding times when somebody's seeking a variance or conditional use or the community has entered into an MOU, it's, it definitely will, it has to weigh into the certain consideration, because we certainly don't want to be in a position of having an entire community on both sides, you know, on all sides of an issue, wanting to see something move forward, and then having one, one way of getting that approved to shut down a project. But I think, you know, I think I have to learn and weigh those decisions very carefully as I go along, but, yeah.
Do you think that would be cause to either reject or bring it back to a negotiating table of sorts until?
I think it's definitely an opportunity to help people either go back to the, like, the postponement process, I thought was really effective. I think, I thought that the members of the BMZA were very thoughtful in that, like, if you're ready, this might be not the favorable outcome. So here, we would encourage you to do X, Y, and Z, so you could come back and have a more favorable outcome. So I see that as a really effective process and something I definitely want to continue, like, don't make a hasty decision, help people through the process. But I also have to learn more about the legal responsibilities and making sure that I'm staying in my lane. And that, I think, is going to be both from the community's side, making sure I'm a champion for the city and the people who live here, but also take my responsibility seriously, because everybody has limitations, you know, and different things that are within their locus of control. So that's going to be an exciting part of the job for me, to be able to learn where I can be most impactful.
Yeah. And similarly, another situation in my district, where I saw an MOU that was not followed for a number of years. A renewal came up. That renewal was fortunately rejected, but only by a single vote. So, once again, this is where, this is important. You know, my office is actively working with said business and the community to get to guess. But I think it's really important that we have the ability to enforce those MOUs, or else it's an exercise in futility if we draft an MOU that no one has to follow and the BMZA won't stand by it. So just encourage you to think about that, you know, as, you know, we want to be able to work in good faith with the community, with our businesses, and anybody operating within the city. We also want to make sure that when they put something on paper, they stand by it.
I agree.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Council Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And my question, again, was on the same lines of community, and you seem to have really answered that and know the importance of really, whatever bill or issue is coming before the BMZA that you really look at the whole community perspective. And just to give one example, you know, we have a number of, I guess, counseling drug treatment centers starting to, you know, pop up in spaces. And there was an area in my district that there was supposed to be a proposed space for one. And if it wasn't for the community actually stepping up, giving proof, they, they had to actually really do a lot of work to prove to the BMZA. And it all, again, was circled around parking spaces. And the company that tried to get there didn't, you know, they probably knew that it wasn't conducive to parking. And because of the due diligence of the community, they were not, they were denied that location. So just, and that was the only thing that was prohibiting that place to be there. And it was in a small group, front store shopping area. And it was just really a bad location. And we haven't, I haven't heard any more after that one hearing. So, again, the community brought the evidence to the Board, and if they hadn't have done that, I think they would have been allowed. So just an example of really, you really needing to have to do your own homework? Because for the most part, I think people in a community, they want businesses to come. They want, you know, people in their community. But if there's actually something that is wrong, they really need to be listened to.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm sympathetic. I live in the 12th, we have the highest concentration in the city.
Right, right.
And so I think, yeah, I mean, I always say, you know, especially working in South Baltimore, the neighbors are the experts in their own community and they can really help guide some of these decisions. And so I think it's just really important to strike that balance of the opportunity to give people a chance to be heard and making sure that as city people that have positions of authority, that we're helping them get into the right venue, so to make sure that they get the favorable outcome that they desire.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're going to take a two-minute recess and then resume with LO twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-four-seven, Legislative Oversight Hearing on Recycling. Good afternoon. This is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. We're here to hear LO 23-0047 Legislative Oversight Hearing on the Resumption of Weekly Recycling. And for the reason we're here, Director, your agency has historically intentionally shielded public information from the public, as well as the City Council. This is true from everything, from contaminated water to curbside collections. Because we couldn't get simple answers, or just get any honest or transparent answers at our previous hearings, we have no other choice but to have this hearing. I made a formal request for communications between you and your team regarding the resumption of weekly recycling, and instead I got a simple, basic little PowerPoint and one memo from the end of last month, an email from one of your staff members to you. And so clearly, that information is not responsive to my request and still needs to be fulfilled. In September of 2021, the Mayor and the Director of DPW went against the warnings about, that were issued to them about rolling out the blue bins. Ever since that happened, collections prior to that were inconsistent, and they were told to wait until they were stabilized prior to rolling out those bins. Almost immediately after those bins were rolled out, collection situation went from inconsistent to completely shut down, and we went many weeks with boxes piling up in the streets and a lot of it ending up in our waterways. For over two years now, since that rollout, you and your agency blamed those cans amongst a plethora of other excuses for the inability to provide the most basic function of city government. This needs to stop. The residents of the city are fed up with the largest recipient of their hard-earned tax dollars being squandered on silly things like a new logo or, or a calendar that comes months into the year. So my first question before we get into the presentation, because it's, should have had it prior to this hearing, is when will I get the information that I requested from you?
Thank you, Councilman. The information I sent to you completes the request. You had requested written correspondence between, that was distributed between members of my executive team, sent to me about resumption of weekly recycling. I sent you over several documents like you'd mentioned, and then you had followed up with the question about stating that that information was limited. I provided a follow-up email to you today stating the dates and times that I meet with my staff to discuss weekly recycling. Those days, I'll, I'll read out for the full council. They're highlighted here in the email that I sent you earlier today. It's a series of bi-weekly meetings that started on Monday, September 11th. I held those at 9:00 AM. I had meetings with my team to discuss weekly recycling on September 11th, September 25th, October 10th, October 23rd, and November 6th.
Okay. So I asked for all correspondence, communications between you guys regarding your deliberations and everything else regarding weekly recycling. Are you trying to tell me that the only email you could muster up is a Tuesday, October 24th email from one of your staff members to you? You're telling me over two years, there's no other correspondence between you, the team, internal discussions as to why they can't get recycling back up and running, why, why it's taking so long? Because I know we've had a bunch of different hearings. Multiple hearings gave conflicting information, both on levels of staffing, levels of equipment. We've got a whole series of different excuses when you go through all of them. And so are you telling me that those are all the correspondence? If I file a Freedom of Information Act request, based on my request that I made last time, all I'm going to get is one email from you?
The, the request, as I understood it, was communicate written correspondence that was submitted by my, members of my executive team that were sent to me on weekly recycling. Those are the, that's the information that I provided to you. In addition to that, I also included information that's presented at the city's clean stat meetings and meeting agendas that were coordinated through the Mayor's Office.
Look, this is, this is the same, this is the same nonsense we've been getting from you guys for two years. This is not responsive to it. I asked for all communications regarding this topic. Are you telling me when you go and search your inbox, this is all you find?
And related to weekly recycling.
To the resumption of weekly recycling, there's this one email. That's it?
There was two emails that I forwarded to you.
Two, okay, so two years of you guys failing to perform a function that is the most basic function of city government and is required by law. In two years, you have two emails?
That's the information I provided to you. If, if you want to have a discussion about the resumption of weekly recycling, the information's also included in this presentation. It talks about a number of different items that we're working on and coordinated efforts between not just DPW, but our partner agencies in order to resume weekly recycling.
You are intentionally neglecting to provide information that's being requested. You, you could not answer the basic question of when weekly recycling is restarting. You could not confirm what your bureau had told us, despite me asking multiple times. I asked for this information so I can try to understand why it's taken you guys two years to get a function that was going perfectly fine before and all of a sudden just disappeared. I'm trying to understand what went into that. And you're trying to tell me that in two years, this is all you got? So maybe that explains, if that's true, which I don't think it is, then, then you're telling me that's, that's, that's why recycling's not restarting, because there's, there's two emails on the topic?
Councilman, I'm happy to go through the PowerPoint presentation. I think the PowerPoint presentation answers your questions in terms of...
It doesn't answer my, and I'll, I'll let you get to that, but it does not answer my question about all of the communications regarding this topic. It doesn't answer that. I'd like to understand what discussions and communications you guys are having and why the most basic function of city government is such a challenge to the largest funded city agency. So go, go ahead into your presentation, but I will file a Freedom of Information Act. And if you don't provide the information, I will have to, I will have to take legal action and, and get it from you guys, because you simply cannot provide the most basic information to the City Council that has a requirement to hold you guys accountable. And right now, you're in violation of city law, and, and you provide two emails. That's what you provide. So go ahead into your presentation.
Thank you, Chair Slifer. Members of the Council, Richard Luna, interim director of Department of Public Works. Also with me today is our Bureau Head, Craig Jeter for Solid Waste. And we also have representatives as well, too, from the Mayor's Office and Department of General Services. So the information we collected here for you today talks about this, our current plans and, and, and the items that we're putting together in terms of resuming weekly recycling in Q1 of 2024. So the first item we're going to talk about, if we could advance two slides, is route optimization. So the city partnered with vendor Rubicon to study our routes last year. They also are currently working with us to redesign our routes so that we can resume weekly recycling in Q1 of '24. Lot of information on this slide, so I think it's actually going to be better summarized in the next one, if we could advance to the next slide. If we can go ahead one slide? I'll start talking and the slide will catch up. So the initial Rubicon recommendation included 24 routes for bi-weekly recycling, and it also recommended 40 routes to implement weekly recycling. The 40 recycling routes would approximately have about 1,300 stops per route. This was essentially trying to get the city into a more level of industry-best standards for stops per route. That's that $1,300, 1,300 figure that you see there on the screen. We know that there's resource constraints, whether it's on, on the staffing levels or trucks. And so we had asked Rubicon to reevaluate that, those weekly recycling routes. So the ask to, to our vendor, who's helping us deliver and complete this study, is amending the number of routes so that instead of 40, you're actually going to 30 routes. And with that, you would have about 1,700 stops per route. So in our current level of service, based off of what we provide today for bi-weekly recycling, we have about, our current routes have approximately 2,600 stops. So as you can see, by increasing to 30, which will be the plan for Q1 of '24, we actually reduced those overall numbers of stops from 2,600, which is the current level, down to about 1,700. And so when weekly recycling resumes in, in next part of, of '24, DPW will have 45, 45 trash routes and 30 recycling routes for a total of 75 routes per day. This next information here, there's a couple of charts. It's, it's going to be a little hard to, to really see, but I'll, I'll walk through with the council what these charts entail. So these charts are mirroring the information that is shared on a bi-weekly basis at the city's clean stat meetings. The clean stat meetings look at data and performance across a number of different services that revolve around multiple different agencies, DPW being one of them, that talk about core city services that essentially beautify and keep the city clean. The resumption to weekly recycling information is included in those meetings, so this is actually the information that was presented at the clean stat meeting earlier today. So as we mentioned, 30 crews are going to be needed to implement weekly recycling in Q1 of '24. You'll see that there's a gap there. So currently, we're performing on average about 10 routes per, per day, because we're performing week, bi-weekly recycling. As, as we get closer and implement the, the, the weekly recycling in Q1, you actually see that, that gap there shrink as the new staff is onboarded and the new routes are deployed. So that, that information will look a little more closely to the charts that are on the middle and to the right of the page. The next, the next chart over there talks about the trash routes, which is getting to 45, which is our current 45 crews needed to complete the trash routes, and then our availability of load packers. So as we've mentioned in past hearings, the resumption of weekly recycling was essentially tied to two main components. Getting the additional crews, which we're thankful we're funded through this part of the budget. We had 20 new crews that were, that were dedicated to routine services as part of the most recent budget process, and a number of new vehicles that have been ordered. So this is actually the current level of load packers available to us. We have a need for 75 load packers total in order to get to weekly recycling, and currently we're averaging about 62 load packers available to us. And so you'll see some of those gaps there, that would be that gap in order for us to get to weekly recycling. Now, there's good news, because there are trucks on the way. And so those new trucks that we've ordered and that city has ordered through DGS is what is going to help the city get to weekly recycling in the first part of Q1 '24. So currently, the daily recycling crews and load packers needed to, that were needed, we needed to increase those to 30 and 75 respectively, and these numbers are meant to allow for weekly recycling to be completed exceeding that 10-hour workday, which is what we're noticing in some of our routes currently. And like I'd mentioned earlier, our load packer availability has actually increased. If you notice on that chart on the right, you'll notice that some of those numbers and figures were hitting closer to around 50. They're doing much better recently. We want to give great appreciation, great appreciation to our partners at DGS for actually being, getting more trucks in service. And so that has been a huge help and a huge, huge help for us lately. We can go to that next slide. There might be a slight delay. So this next slide that you'll see is we return to weekly recycling for staffing. Thank you. So the current need right now is because we, we, we're going to need 75 routes to complete both trash pickup and recycling pickup on a weekly basis. That's essentially 90 crews that are needed, because you need 20% contingency. The 20% contingency is there just in case you have staff that's out sick, if you have staff that's out on A-time. You need that bench in order to, to perform that work. So we're making tremendous progress on getting all of those positions filled. You'll see an asterisk there next to the solid waste drivers that are needed. That's because we actually have two vendors currently working with us that actually supplement our trash routes. And so technically, you don't need the 94 crews. In this sense, you only need 88. If you were to expand any services with those, with those vendors, like we've had some discussions with one of them, that number could also then be reduced. But our staff has done a tremendous job at getting the number of crews completed and the new hires completed on time in order for us to resume to weekly recycling in the first part of '24. We'll move on next to the number of new trucks that have been ordered. This is just a high-level summary of the 80 new load packers that were needed by the Bureau of Solid Waste. A number of our trucks are aged and have gone well past their lifespan. That's an indication to a previous chart that we had showed you that showed the number of available load packers to the agency on a daily basis. So this is just a high-level summary of the total number of trucks that, that have been ordered. As you see on the, there, on the screen, a lot of those trucks, the requests were put in back starting in May of '22, and then the POs issued shortly thereafter. If we go to the next slide, the return to weekly recycling in terms of load packers. So as you'll see in the next chart, as of the most recent schedule that we had, there haven't been any changes. And, and the next chart, which we'll get to in a moment, will show the number of load packers that have been ordered and when we expect those deliveries. The next current delivery that's going to be set is those 11 that we had mentioned at a council hearing previously. Those are slated to arrive on January 31st, with the expected in-service dates of mid-February, that 2/14/24 date. As we've mentioned all along, the resumption of weekly recycling is very contingent on those new trucks arriving. We, we're currently scheduled to get those on the end of January and then get those out in service on February 14th. The earliest date we can resume weekly recycling for the entire city would be at the end of February, so that late, that later part of February or March. It's very contingent on us receiving those trucks on time. And we'll go to the next slide, so you can see those dates. So out of the 80 trucks that have been ordered, five of them, that's that first line, have already been received and in service. We had went over a similar slide to the council back when we met with them a few weeks ago. This is similar information that we've presented in past hearings. So originally, those 11 trucks were slated to arrive in December. You'll see those dates crossed out there on the, near the top of your screen. Six of them were supposed to arrive on December 12th. Another five of them are scheduled to arrive on December 13th. Those trucks have gotten pushed back because of some manufacturing delays and supply chain issues. They are currently scheduled to be arriving on January 31st, '24. And like it's noted in the chart, there is some turnover time in order for DGS to retrofit those trucks and then get them out into service. This is exactly what we had mentioned in the previous slide. That earliest resumption date that you can get to weekly recycling would be at the end of February, because we need those 11 trucks in order to make this happen. Just to summarize on the last slide, we're committed to getting weekly recycling completed in Q1 of '24, just as the Mayor's tasked us to. Our staff is currently doing the rightsizing study and analysis with Rubicon. We expect that information to come back by the end of December. That's going to increase the number of total recycling routes to 30. We've received five of the 80 trucks that are required, and 11 of those are going to be coming and scheduled for delivery currently on January 31st of next year. And the definitive start date of weekly recycling, like we've mentioned, is contingent on those trucks arriving in Baltimore and being outfitted by DGS. Our DPW HR team has done a tremendous job at doing robust recruiting, getting the word out and getting our positions filled. We've had so far 80% of the new positions that were funded through the budget process. That's the 20 new crews for weekly, to get us to, to weekly recycling. They've already hired about 80% of those staff, and we are on track to complete those hirings by Q1 of '24. So with that, Chair Slifer and the council, that concludes the presentation.
If you hit that target at the end of February, is that going to be a full citywide rollout or is that going to be a partial rollout?
That would be full citywide rollout.
So in order to restart weekly recycling, when you do start it, it will be the full city?
It will be.
So there's no pilot rollout?
Right now, it's the full city.
Okay. Can you just, my last question before I move on to my colleagues. Explain, I, I see, the goalpost has moved countless times, right? Prior to, to you and the previous director in your roles, the, the city used to pick up weekly recycling. It was happening. It was happening for many years. And then it just stopped. So how did we do it before without, you know, I mean, first we were told it was a staffing thing, then it was, was there just one day where just like everybody quit and all the trucks broke down at the same day? I mean, explain how, how we did all of that prior to all of these different goals and, you know, and the goalposts moving, whether it's the technology issue, whether it's a truck issue, whether it's a staffing issue, whether the bins are too big or the bins were too small. How did we pick up recycling before all this?
So I think that information was best summarized in our presentations to the council back during our budget session. So if you recall the presentation slides from them, two different programs you're talking about. You're talking about a program that, where people purchase yellow bins to participate in recycling. You had about 40,000 participating in that program. Then you roll out a slate of 170,000 blue carts. That's over a 300% increase in recycling. And as we demonstrated to the council at the time...
Two different...
Slides from them, two different programs they're talking about. You're talking about a program that where people purchase yellow bins to-
Premises are located at 916-
... which is midway that does not have all those-
Are you going to identify-
... of 2023. I was prompt-
But there were a couple of faulty-
Point 20, small-
Uh, the train-
Tell them to stop.
... several-
Rules and regulations to-
... party.
You'll see on here that the homicide clearance rate has doubled. The fixed ones are about 60 to 100K.
To another 80.
Just checking the, checking the microphone, okay. Just want to make sure there wasn't an echo again. That information- So the, I'll just reframe the question quickly. The question was about the changes in service levels that were provided back previously to fiscal year 2010 and then what the service levels are like now. So back in 2010, as we presented-
I'm not, I'm not talking about 2010. I'm talking about 2020, 2021. Recycling was happening, it was happening every single week.
There was, so two different programs there. So the previous program was a yellow bin program where you had about 40,000 people participating in the city. That's about half this, a quarter of the city. In fiscal year '23, when we rolled out the blue carts, that's a 300% increase in the number of people participating in recycling. As we highlighted during the budget presentation, there was no changes to the number of trucks or staff for routine services during that, during that change and during that period. And so that's why we put that information together. We made that, put that as part of the budget practice, budget package, and thankfully, those crews were added to the budget for this coming, for this current fiscal year.
Okay. So just so I understand correctly, the entire reason why we have gone two years only picking up recycling every other week instead of weekly is because of these, these blue bins and this new plan and more people recycling because they got blue bins?
You said, correct, you have more people participating without any changes in staffing. That was the same information we presented to the council back during our budget presentation.
Okay. So if, if they heeded the advice that they were given not to roll those out, you're saying then we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the problems we're having now?
That's not what I'm saying. The, I'm saying is, at that time, there was no changes on the staffing levels and the trucks that were available, and so that's what we're getting to with this, with this current fiscal year and getting resumption back in, in Q1 of '24. We've gotten the positions funded. 80% of those positions are now hired. We're on track to complete all of those positions. We ordered 80 new trucks. Five of those have been arrived. 11 of those are coming at the end of January. All of that combining, coming together is what gets the city to weekly recycling.
So, so then the administration's decision to roll out these blue bins and this new program, which ultimately ended up bringing our recycling situation to a halt for a while and then jumped to every other week, why would you guys even consider any other new programs? I've seen you guys market that you're, you're starting some new initiatives and doing other things. How are you doing that? Why would you do any, why would you create new programs when you're not doing the most basic ones that affect the entire city every single week?
Well, as an interim director for the Department of Public Works, I am extremely proud of our staff for the work that they do day in and day out. We have some of the hardest working staff in the city, in the region, in the country. There's new programs that come online, like you mentioned, every single year. We have done tremendous work on our billing system. We partnered with a vendor to bring in payment plans in order to get better, accurate billings completed and for us to receive those revenues. We've done tremendous work on our water and wastewater bureau. Our staff does some of the most hardest work every single day. And so getting new programs together and looking at information, studying information, figuring out better ways to do that, that is, that is the mark of a good agency, and that's what we strive to do. And just look at weekly recycling. We looked at the number of routes that we're doing. We're trying to get better to closer to industry's best standards. We've gone out and been aggressive in doing our hiring. We're aggressive in getting these new trucks. We're doing everything we can to get weekly recycling back and as part of that program.
So that wasn't my question. My question wasn't, what are you doing to improve current functions? That actually leads to, my exact point is that you should be doing the things that you just said, improving the current things that, current programs and initiatives that you have going on now. That should be the focus. My question was on new programs, like I saw you guys rolled out that you were going to be doing some new composting and some other programming stuff there. My question is, how are you doing all of that? And, and is that, should you be doing these new programs when you, when you don't have the most basic function stabilized?
Well, the, the composting program, and, and this is a huge credit to the infrastructure dollars that are coming through the federal government. Our staff is very aggressive in going and applying for those funds. We got $4 million for, to do a composting, composting work and facility there at Bullies Lane. That is, that's going to be an incredible resource for the city. We'll continuously go after those types of funds as they're available because we do get those requests about providing these additional services because that's what people want from the city and from, from DPW. As those federal dollars come down, continuously come down, we'll be aggressive in going after those funds as well.
Okay. So that, that really echoes and reminds me of the response that you guys gave about the blue bins when we discussed that during budget hearings and how it created the disaster that we have now. And that was basically the same thing. Well, people are going to fund these bins, so let's go ahead and do it. And I, I would hope that you learn from those mistakes that just because there's funding for a program doesn't mean that you just lose, lose sight of what you're supposed to be doing and what the citizens are paying for and just jump on a new program because you have some funding today to do so.
Councilman Conroy, you have a question?
Councilwoman Ramos?
Council Vice President, you have a question?
Um, you had brought up the blue bins. Has there been a problem with the blue bins? One thing that I noticed is that I, I see it, and it has increasing and educated more people to start doing recycling. And even to the point that some people are using the blue bins for trash too. And I'm talking about people that never even put trash in a trash can. So I'm like, just can you explain, I guess, or just give us some information of how the blue bins are important for the neighborhoods?
Yeah. Now, thank you for, thank you, Madam Vice President. The, the blue bins have been a tremendous benefit for Baltimore City in getting people access to be able to recycle. And so our team shares information on a regular basis about recycling. What we're doing now too is looking at what else additional communications we can do as we get closer to the presumption of weekly recycling in, in Q1 of '24, like we mentioned, and then just continuously push that information out to residents as part of the 10-year solid waste management plan as well too. There's a number of different items in there that is, is pushing the city to, to be more responsive, to, to go after the sustainability goals and ultimately divert as much trash as we can into getting into our city's landfill. So that information is, is very critical, and we appreciate your partnerships and helping share in some of that information.
Thank you. And then I guess the other piece for me is, you know, the world of sanitation workers have really, very dangerous jobs. It involves lots of training, connecting with nonprofits to help do their own training, to help make that person a better person to have a career in, as a sanitation worker and making those partnerships through training organizations throughout the city is, just share the positiveness of how that is moving forward. Because I know, you know, the city has given money to some of these organizations to help train people for you, like Cleaning Green Team in Park Heights and, and other places throughout the city. And all that's connected to these, to the jobs with, such as with recycling.
No, yeah, that's a great point too. So we have tremendous great partnerships, especially on our recruitment and workforce development programs. And so one of the things, and it's a huge credit to DPW staff, well, before my time, but recognizing the gap from a solid waste worker to a supervisor or superintendent or a division chief or a bureau head, right, is if I'm a solid waste worker and I'm on the back of a trash truck or recycling truck, the only way I can be a supervisor of that unit is if I have driver experience. And if I'm a solid waste worker, I can't go out and afford to buy or afford to pay for classes in order to get a CDL license. We started that program here within DPW, which is available to all of our employees. So our employees go through our own training. It's, it's nothing that comes out of their pocket. We pay for it all. And we get employees through so that they can get a CDL license, so that they can get into a CDL position, so they can get experience in that position, so that they have an opportunity now become a supervisor, superintendent, a division chief, the director position, right? And so recognizing that there was that barrier was really important for this agency. Recognizing that our, our drivers, our, those employees that have CDL licenses are critical for us in order to perform basic city services and partnering with the mayor, partnering with DHR, partnering with our different sister organizations earlier in the year, to be able to offer those employees a $10,000 bonus, which gets paid out over quarterly installments. That has been a huge game saver for us. As you can tell in our hiring levels and our efforts, we've done a tremendous job at going out and getting CDL drivers right now when there is still a national crisis in terms of getting people in the door that have CDL licenses and that level of experience. And so that $10,000 has really benefited us in order to make those hires complete.
And then lastly, is there, the same process that you follow for the green trash cans, if, if something is broken or damaged, do, can they do the same thing for those blue cans?
Correct. It's a, best, best advice there for residents is to call 311 and get that in the system. Then there's a process we follow internally to get those replaced.
We probably need some advertisement for that, that we can distribute as well.
Yeah, we're happy to put some information together and get that over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Conroy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director. It helps to see that we, we've got a plan here. One of the things I know we've had trouble with in the past has been communication, letting folks, and I think Madam Vice President just alluded to some of the issues that we have with communicating with residents on how to interface correctly with the bins, letting them know that this is coming, giving them a date, giving them a time. Can you tell me a little bit about what we're doing to make sure that folks know how to recycle properly? We've had trouble communicating in the past, and I want to make sure that we're thinking about these, these problems before they arise. We've got between now and February. I just want to know what your plans are there.
Yeah, so our team currently is working on those plans in terms of a full communications rollout, not just for presumption of weekly recycling, but once it is, how do you expand, how do you, how do you get more participation out of folks? We're looking at various different options. Some of those you'll, you'll be seeing from us coming out in '24 is going to be in terms of videos. We just hired a number of, of Spanish-speaking staff within our, our agency, and so for any of those videos, I've asked them to go and record those both in English and Spanish so that we can have those available to people. I, I recently participated and sent in a demonstration. We looked at one vendor who has a recycling app, right? And, and the app itself has a ton of different resources. All of it's bilingual, all of it, I'm sorry, all of it's in multiple languages. And so it, it has its own, you know, videos, demonstrations of what goes in blue bins, what goes in green bins, et cetera, and then just best tips. And, and you can even build in reminders for people that, oh, today's my trash pickup day, and today's my recycling pickup day. So we're looking at all of those different things, and, and as those get rolled out and as those are finalized, we're happy to share that information with you because I think that's going to be really important, not just, not just for us as an agency, but for, for everybody to help get that information out.
Yeah. And I, I want to talk a little bit about contamination. With the rollout of the blue bins, we're seeing more people participate, which is great. We're also seeing a lot of confusion about what can and cannot be recycled, which leads to contamination, which leads to sometimes that stuff ending up in, in the incinerator anyway. So how are we communicating those pieces? And I'll be honest, I myself, I recycle. I better. But, and I better be doing more than that. But I even have questions sometimes about what our waste streams are able to handle and how to properly deal with some of these issues. So what are we doing to make sure that people understand how to recycle properly, how we can avoid contamination? Because what ends up happening there is it ends up being incinerated if not.
Yeah, so that's a great point. I've recognized it too. So we need to do a better job of making sure we provide clear information in terms of what is, goes in your blue carts and what goes in the green carts. And so that's part of the task in terms of the, or that's part of the ask with my comms team, is to start looking at that information, pulling in resources. If we need to do a partnership, just like on that, that app that I had mentioned, then we'll, then we'll get those implemented. But for us, our biggest goal is, as well, is, is making sure that that information is getting out, that we're being robust in our communications, that, that you have, you know, social media toolkits that you can easily use for your channels to just a quick copy and paste and get that information out. But, but I recognize that we need to do a much better job of getting that information out, and that's been my ask with my team, is to come up with a way to get better, more accurate and quick information out, and especially in terms of what goes in the green cart, what goes in a blue cart.
And I want to encourage you, you're finding the people here in this meeting after 5:00 on Thursday, because we do care about this issue a lot. We get a lot of complaints from our constituents about it. We want to see this done well. Certainly, the chair has been tooting that horn for years now. So we want to make sure, if there's any way that we can be helpful in spreading the message, clarifying what people can expect, please, 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 please see us as partners to get that message out there.
Yeah, no, appreciate that. And, and like I've mentioned in past hearings, as soon as we have that date and it's contingent on those trucks, but as soon as we have that date, we'll be sharing that information out with you. Like I said, we're working on social, the staff will have a social media toolkit that'll be rolling out in '24 so we can get all that information out and provide the best information to people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director, in the presentation you just showed us, it showed that you had Rubicon also study the routes based on every other week. Why, why would you guys have them study every other week collections if the intention was always to go back to weekly?
That was to look at the number of stops our crews were making compared to industry best standards. So that was the information there. So if you were going to get the, the routes, if you were going to reduce the number of stops per crew or stops per route to get to industry best standards, go off the current operations, off the current biweekly recycling operations, what would that look like? And that's why that information point was then included.
So you already have the list of the final routes?
No, we expect those to come in at the end of December from our, from our vendor.
Gotcha. So you don't, so these 30 routes, you don't know where, like which households are included in them?
Oh, today we don't. The vendor's still working on those. We expect to get those in at the end of December. We'll sit down, meet with them, go over that information before we start sharing that out.
Okay. Can you walk us through, we get this question a lot, surprisingly. Where, where does the recycling go when you guys pick it up? And how much is it costing us or how much are we making on it?
Thank you for that question. I can tell you that it goes to Elk Ridge, Maryland. There is a recycling facility there that is operated by Waste Management. Currently, the markets don't, don't dictate that we are paid for that recycling. I think the only recycling that is actually paid for now in the market is cardboard, paper products. So there's actually a fee, you know, to dump there. And Councilman Conroy's talking about the, we're talking about the contamination. So if we can get our contamination rate down, then the fee goes down. And as we start up with recycling again this year, or next year rather, that's one of the things we're going to hit. You know, we're going to talk about reeducating people, going to the areas that we have low participation in, and we want them to participate more, but we want them to be educated to, you know, don't throw those styrofoam restaurant plates in the, in the recycling because that's contamination. But it does go to Elk Ridge, Maryland. Waste Management currently is our, our vendor.
Yeah, so we don't have styrofoam in the city. We, we banned it years ago, so I'm sure there's probably no styrofoam in anybody's receptacles.
Let's go with that.
So how much does, how much does the tonnage cost of contaminated recycling compared to just regular trash?
It could be, the tonnage, the rate could go as high as $100 a ton. It could be the tonnage, the rate could go as high as $100 a ton. It could go as low as $70 a ton.
What's more expensive, the trash or the contaminated recycling?
Contaminated recycling.
Gotcha. And so the contaminated recycling, do they then sort through it and actually that's why it's cost more because you go through a greater process to pull out the recycling?
That is correct. If our truck could pull in there, dump the material out, and it's all clean, and they put it on the conveyor belts, it would take care of itself. But when there's, you know, let's say, three or four garbage bags that are dumping out just for per homeless, just say, well, somebody's got to take that trash bag out before it gets up there, and that incur their labor cost, labor costs incurred with that.
Gotcha. So what do you what do you think in the price differential is between the two, like ballpark?
I'd be scared to guess. I could I could get the information and get back with you.
Please do. And so when you say it goes to Elkridge, Maryland, I assume the trucks are not filling up a truck of recycling, driving to Elkridge, Maryland. So where does it go between when they pick it up in the city to emptying their truck? Like which is there a specific transfer station they're bringing it to?
Oh, yeah, we take it to Northwest. We take their own transfer station. We dump it there, and we put it in our tractor trailers, and then we haul it up to Elkridge.
So they bring it to Northwest transfer station? So where in the Northwest transfer station does that go?
So there's there's three pits there. One of them is inoperable right now, but the other two, one is for recycling and one is for trash.
In the in the barn?
Correct.
So which one's which?
It depends on like what they have going on that particular day. Maybe when you first drive in, maybe you may see pile of recycling, trash is in the middle, or it could be vice versa.
Right, because I see piles of just piles in that in that barn. I don't really see like a lot getting sorted through. So I'd be curious to know which side of those bins in the barn are recycling versus trash.
If you if you go there one day, I would ask the supervisor on hand and, you know, maybe he'll show you. But when I've went there the past few weeks, when I first drive in, it's on the right recycling and trash is typically in the middle.
Trash is in the middle. Gotcha. Okay. You have a question? Any other questions? As a Director, just to clarify my request about the correspondence that led up to where we are today. So I explicitly would like for you guys to search your inboxes for anything with the keywords weekly recycling, resumption of weekly recycling, and provide those documents to me. And I want to know how long will it take you to do that?
The weekly recycling emails are the ones that I already sent you. So I just want to check, are you are you expanding that to items that were not sent to me that the team is working on?
I said the executive team, right? So there's no way, and if there is, this uncovers even a larger issue here. So there's no way that between you, the previous head of solid waste, current head of solid waste, any other people in the leadership team that are involved in the planning or details regarding solid waste, that none of that is communicated via email to one another or that you guys aren't sending that to each other. There's just no way that there's two emails regarding one of the most important topics in your agency and something that you guys have been giving us a whole bunch of different information that conflicts with each other. Obviously, there's got to be there's got to be thousands of pages of documentation just off of I've seen I've seen just by watching the news, when the when the media has filed Public Information Act, I've seen emails published on the news where you guys are discussing it, and none of that was in there. So I'm just I guess I'm not I'm not understanding where the communication breakdown is. I'm just asking for all of the communications between you and members of your executive team that are involved in the resumption of weekly recycling and recycling in general to provide all of all of those deliberations. So and all the communications so that I can understand how it's taken two years.
So the original request, the way I understood it, was correspondence submitted to me from my executive team, and that's the information I provided to you. As I also followed up and I stated at the beginning of the meeting, I hold bi-weekly meetings with my staff. We have those discussions in those meetings.
And does anybody take notes?
If they're taking notes, they're not coming to me. I have not seen notes from those meetings. So I have discussions with my I have discussions with my staff, and I can go over the dates again, but I have discussions with my staff on a bi-weekly basis to discuss weekly recycling. The majority of that work is done orally. I didn't have written correspondence to send to submit to you other than the two records that I found.
Okay. That is that is not normal, that you're the Director of the agency, and there's two emails to you regarding the most basic function of city government that you guys are failing to provide. So my request, if you go back and watch, and I asked you to do that, my emails to you, it was communications between the executive team. So if I if I need to be clearer, you, all members of your team that are involved in recycling and leadership, okay, so bureau heads, deputy bureau heads, that over, all of them need to go into their inbox and search those key words regarding recycling, and you need to send me that information. So how long will that take?
So that's that's expanding the scope of what I understood the original request to be. So I just want to make that clear.
Just to just to clarify, because you did this during that hearing also, was you wanted to zero in on what you wanted to provide. You wanted to say that, hey, you know, I can give you weekly updates. I can give you some of that. I was pretty explicit with it. So now I'm being even more explicit because I see we're still playing this this game. So how long will my request take for you guys to search your inbox and provide the information like you do with every other Freedom of Information Act request that you
Hello, Chairman. I just wanted to make sure that I am responding to your request directly. So my understanding of the request, and I watched the hearing, we rewatched the hearing based off of your correspondence that you sent to us today. And again, the request was for the Director's emails, which we provided. I think the key word that you that you even stated is that these are deliberative, right? And so I'm happy to work with the team to pull some additional communications, but they are obviously deliberative because this is something that we are working through with the agency and of course with the mayor's office. Now, what we did do, though, is go above and beyond the request, and we provided you our deliberative materials today, which were the materials that you received, that were the clean stat materials that we look at bi-weekly, where we look at everything from the delivery date of our vehicles as well as the staffing. We also look at where we are currently performing. So we provided you additional materials above and beyond what your initial request was, and all of those materials are deliberative, but we wanted to bring you and all members of the council into that process. So we are doing our best to be very transparent with you and the public about when we will return to weekly recycling.
You know, respectfully, there was nothing above and beyond about what was provided. And I'll just tell you.
Did you request email correspondence and also deliberative materials?
Yeah, I was very clear on what I was looking for. I was very clear that I would like to see all of the correspondence that went on so that to understand what they what the conversations were. I could tell you, I've reviewed a lot of the hearings that we've had in the past. I've lined up a lot of the documentation information, and the goalpost has moved countless times in the past two years since the administration decided to go against advice that they were given and roll out these cans, which halted the most basic function of city government. And so, you know, we instead of playing like a word game here, it's very it's very clear that I would like to know all of the I would like to understand how this has gone back and forth for two years, and I'd like all the correspondence that relate to that so that I can see, hey, you know, on this date, we were talking that, oh, staffing is a big issue, and here's what we're doing about that. And then, you know, find out a year later, then all of a sudden they're like, okay, we have a plan on this piece, but then, oh, whoops, we didn't we didn't get the technology piece down. Oh, okay, we're working on the technology piece. Oh, whoops, we need out the equipment. Because that happened. Over the past two years, we've had multiple different hearings on this topic, and core functions of them, we literally went from the from leaders in the agency saying that the every other weekly pickup does not add on any more time and is just as easy to pick up as as it is when they were doing it every week, which we obviously all can, I hope, agree that that's not not accurate, and the workers are working way harder than than they had to before. And it's unfair for them to to be putting in this many hours and doing this many stops, which is why I made a request of the administration for every single one of them to get at least a $5,000 bonus. I think one of my requests that originally was $10,000 each of them, just to compensate them for the work that they've already done that was above and beyond. And so how would you like the request framed for me to get the communications from the Department of Public Works regarding weekly recycling? You got to turn on your microphone.
Got it. Okay. So I'm actually going to back up a little bit. So I think it's important to provide context here. The Director did initially provide background on how we got here, but I think it's important to underscore this because there's this notion that, you know, the administration, you know, made this decision to move to these blue bins without without doing some initial thinking and consultation. So one, we were operating a program as a city that was not citywide. It wasn't an equitable program that served 41,000 people. We now have a program that serves almost 180,000 residents, and I believe all of our residents deserve access to recycling. And so that is why the administration made a decision to roll out recycling bins to every resident across the city so that everyone can have access to that service. Now, I think the broader point here, which I think you've made multiple times, and even you've made it in this hearing, this is actually larger than weekly recycling. This is about the stabilization of solid waste services. It's about the stabilization of our fleet. This didn't happen under this administration only. We had to look at all of our fleet, and we have not been able to maintain our fleet over years, which is why we got to the point where our fleet, much of our fleet is in the shop, it's out for repair, and we're not able to keep vehicles on the road, which is why we made the deep investment of ordering 80 trucks, which will help us not only stabilize recycling, it'll also help us stabilize some of our collections at our apartments and condo unit buildings as well as all of our mixed refuse services. So I want to make sure that I'm clear about all the work that has gone into not just the stabilization of recycling, which is, you're absolutely right, a core city service that every resident deserves. This is about the stabilization and sustainability of solid waste services in the city of Baltimore. So that's point number one. I think the second point here is around what you you requested or your request to us. We were being responsive to what you requested. I am happy to have a conversation with you and/or we can do this via email so that we can all be clear about what the request is. But the request, as I saw it at the hearing, as I went back and listened to it again, was the Director's correspondence about the resumption of weekly recycling. It didn't reference the prior Director, nor would we have that information to provide you from the prior Director that is not here. Now, if you're expanding that request to all of the exec team, any email correspondence that they received, we can go through, we can do a search. The last point here, which, you know, my point to you about us providing you deliberative materials that was over and above your request, that's exactly what was provided to you. So we provided you clean stat deck. Every other week, I convene, I don't know, 60 or so individuals across DOT, DHCD, DPW, all of our agencies, BCRP, and we look at and we look at core city services. One of those services that we spend the most time on is the resumption of weekly recycling. We have bought in our data analysts, our financial team. We brought together the top minds in government to make sure that whatever program that we roll out will be a sustainable program because that is what our residents deserve. We provided you those materials, which are not emails. They are actual analysis that has gone into what will get us to the resumption of weekly recycling. My last point is we've talked a lot about February. I would love for February to be the date. We have got to be very clear. We, like every other city in the country, are dealing with supply chain delays, as we saw with us ordering trucks a year and a half ago that we still have not received. We have got to receive those trucks before I feel comfortable with getting us back to weekly recycling. But what you can what I can guarantee you is that as soon as we have trucks that are in the city of Baltimore and that I believe we are ready to roll out a program that is sustainable, we absolutely will do that, and it is my goal to do that in Q1 of 2024.
So first, I appreciate that, and I'll take you up on your offer to meet and go through that. Certainly, the most up-to-date details of, you know, where they're at today is not what I was looking for. What I'm looking for is historic. And I'm happy to meet with you and go through that and make sure we write everything out. I thought, I mean, I should have thought that, I don't know why I thought that, we could just ask a question and get an answer. But just, I guess, a couple of things to what you were saying. I mean, you know, first things first is, you know, you said it didn't happen under this administration. I mean, it did. I mean, prior to to, you know, the new leadership at DPW, recycling was getting picked up. And so that was that was happening.
Recycling was stopped during the pandemic.
I understand that. I'm saying prior to this administration, recycling was being picked up. And every other and you bring up and you bring up every other jurisdiction, no other jurisdiction is still is still suffering in Maryland from not being able to pick this up. We are the only ones who were not who just completely halted, were not, you know, able to to pick up recycling. And I see that every single day because I have four and a half miles of city-county border in my district. And so my residents see that. And so it did happen. It did happen here. And the fact that we're now years years out from that speaks to a far bigger issue. And if we looked at when a lot of these these purchase orders were put in as opposed to when we originally were told they were going to be put in, you'll find a big gap there because that goalpost did move. You know, we were talking, you know, it wasn't like they came out two, two-plus years ago and they said, okay, here's our issues. It's the technology, it's it's the trucks, it's the manpower, here's where we need to get to, here's what we need. There was none of that. It was, you know, one hearing, we'd hear, oh, this issue, but then that issue would start resolving itself or, you know, make improvements, which I thank the agency for the staffing improvements that were made. I give credit where credit's due. I try to be very straightforward on that. And I appreciate seeing the new trucks for, you know, if for no other reason, the fact that, you know, the workers are out there working in the most extreme temperatures and a lot of the the previous trucks did not have air conditioning and other things. So so they deserve that. I'm excited for them that they're getting these these new trucks, and I'll always support that. But when you talk about things like that, it wasn't before, but before we were getting recycling. And so and then the other thing that I really don't, you brought it up, I wouldn't have gone down this this rabbit hole otherwise, but you were saying like that it wasn't equitable before, but now it was. So were the were the recycling trucks not driving down every street before before the blue bins were rolled out?
They were driving to pick up the 41,000 bins that were distributed to residents that had them.
Can you can you explain that to me? Because I'm not familiar with that. So the recycling trucks weren't driving down every street like they do to pick up trash?
They were making they were stopping at the 41,000 locations that had recycling.
But you're saying 40,000 people had access to recycling before, and now 170,000 have access. I'm trying to understand what that means. So anybody can put out recycling. We put it out in boxes. We have a stack of boxes in front of our house now every other week. There's boxes sitting out there in the street, and they come and pick it up. Were the recycling trucks not picking up from ever like if people put out recycling in one specific street somewhere in the city, the trucks weren't driving down and picking it up?
As a part of the yellow bin program, if you had a yellow bin, then you were receiving recycling support.
So if you didn't have a yellow bin, they weren't picking it up from you?
That's for the, Kim, one of the interesting members.
I mean, I can answer that because I've lived in the city for 34 years, right? And so like I see what goes on out there because I've I've lived here my whole life. And so I I know very few people who, you know, who had a who had a yellow, but people put out.
And so they were just putting so they were just putting plastic outside of their homes?
Yeah, and they're still doing that. And now that it's every other week, now that it's every other week, people can't fit two weeks' worth of recycling in there. So I mean, you're well, look, you, I don't know if this week is is this week A or B this week. Where are we at this week?
Week B.
Okay. So next week, when it's my week again in my district, you're welcome to come up there and see, you drive down the streets of my district, you're going to see a ton of cardboard bottles just out because it doesn't fit in. The blue bin is one piece of it. You can't fit two weeks' worth in that. is, is one piece of it. You can't fit two weeks' worth in that. So you have stacked a box of shore. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's where everybody, I mean, that's, that's what I see everywhere I drive through my district. So I guess I'm trying to just understand. I mean, maybe, maybe you guys can answer. Were, were trucks not driving down every, like all the streets where they were picking up trash from? So if somebody put out cardboard boxes two years ago, was it not being picked up? Four years ago, was it not being picked up?
Councilman, I'm, I'm not going to act, not going to get into specifics of the time that I wasn't here in the city, but my understanding is, if the staff is going out and picking up a yellow bin, and there happens to be additional cardboard that's sitting out next to it, they're going to pick that up. So that's happening as those yellow bins were getting picked, were getting picked up. That's my understanding. But yes, as the, as the administrator mentioned, you had about 41,000 people participating in recycling at a time of those people that had purchased those yellow bins.
Okay. I'm, I'm just telling you, historically, that's, that's just not, that's not the case. I mean, there's plenty of people in my district alone that don't own a yellow bin, and they put out their recycling, they put out cardboard out there, they take the biggest box, they put all the other boxes inside the biggest one they got, and the drivers come by every year since recycling started, and they pick it up. You know, I've never-
And I'm, so, so let me acknowledge that I appreciate our staff for doing that. I think the formal program, where we actually were tracking our stops, were the ones where we actually had the 41,000 households with yellow bins, much like the 180,000 with blue bins. But I'm sure that if our team sees additional recycling at a home that doesn't have a blue bin out, that hopefully they're doing their due diligence and keeping our city clean, and we'll collect it as well. So, so I appreciate the back and forth on this. We can get you a more formal response. But again, the formal program was 41,000 households initially that received yellow bins, and you had to pay for those yellow bins. So there was an opt-in to the program. So it was not a citywide program, to my understanding. But again, of course, this was before my time.
Okay. I'm just telling you, and I'll leave it at this, it, that, what, I don't know what, I, this, I didn't know that that's the program. I'm just telling you, the reality in Baltimore City-
I appreciate it.
Since recycling started, if you put out recycling, you got it. I don't even know where you, where you buy the yellow bins from. It's just a reality of what's been happening. Go ahead, Councilman.
Mr. Chair, as someone who didn't have a yellow bin but recycled, the city picked up in whatever you put it in. And so whatever you put out there, the city would have picked up as long as it was recycling. If it wasn't recycling, the city would drive by. So I, I think you, you raised an excellent point, you know. I'm not sure that 41,000 is actually the number of people who were-
There's documentation of the initial program that was established in 2009.
I'll ask this question. Is the 41,000 the number of bins that were put out?
Yes.
Or the number of recorded stops based on when a crew stopped at a home?
No, it was the number of bins that were put out. So 41,000 bins were put out in around 2000, 2009, when the city first started the recycling program. Now, as I mentioned in my, okay?
I just, what I think the chair is trying to say is that that number may not be exactly what the city was actually picking up, in part because I didn't have a yellow bin, and I was getting my recycling picked up every week.
Right. And so as I suggested in my remarks, is that I am hopeful, and it sounds to me like our, our staff was doing their due diligence, and if they saw recycling that needed to be picked up, they were picking up recycling. But there was a formal program, which was the yellow bin program, and that initially started with 41,000 bins. Now, of course, that program grew over time, but that is the formal program that the agency managed. That, that's my only suggestion here.
Thank you for that, Councilman Conway. All right. So the number's definitely about 40,000, somewhere between 40 and I guess 170,000. But Councilman Torrance, and then we're going to go to a vote before Council Vice President leaves on the two BMZA executive nominations we had prior to this. Go ahead.
Sorry, guys. This was my, my old life when I was at DPW. It was 41,000 bins initially, there's multiple reports, but there 41,000 bins initially given out. Then after that, there were retail locations where you could purchase a bin, and that's how they tracked the additional numbers. That was a report that came out subsequently in 2010 that you might not have access to, because that was during some difficult times. In addition to that, there were the general program where they were counting the number of stops to make sure that they were managing the workload of it. So like, there could literally, prior to the blue bins, just to give an example, just Anaxito from my neighborhood, out of the 40 people on my block, maybe 10 of us did it, right? But that was how light it was. But once we were out the blue bins, every week, I could see people rolling out that blue bin and it's signaling to everyone else. So I think that for both Anaxito, but also experience from actually being in the agency and educating people on recycling, I think that the Rubicon report was pretty spot on in terms of like the tonnage. But the tonnage doesn't, one of the things that missed out on the tonnage was the number of households too, because we did not have as many multi, we did not have, the number of how, as you look at the census data, the number of households increased, so there were a number of single people who then started recycling. So the mix of where the numbers are, I think that the numbers drastically got higher in terms of the number of stops. So I think that that's a conversation we have to come back to, especially long-term in terms of the fleet anyway. Because if we're going to grow population, we have to start buying equipment to assess for it anyway.
I think you. Councilman Ramos?
Aha, there we go. Sorry. My apologies. I was just basically saying that the, there's, there were two neighborhoods in my district that weren't recycling at all. So the blue bins really were that reminder. So even, so it's an anecdotal, anecdotally, this program was definitely improvement on that. But I did have a quick question about the many, I've gotten a lot of questions about the bin itself has crack on the top. And so even though, you know, it's supposed to be covered so that it's not going to be filled with water when it rains, because wet cardboard and water just add to the weight, what, what's the plan on if there's, if people are having a crack on their bin, if that's going to be replaced at any time, or is that going to be sort of next phase?
Like I mentioned earlier, if there's a problem with, with either the blue bin or the green bin, call 311 for resident, recommending residents, call 311. That gets tracked, and then we go out and service those and get those replaced, provided on the necessary inventory levels.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry I was late. So that question was covered earlier. My apologies. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Collin?
Oh, I was just going to ask if you could provide the recycling tonnage over the last, I don't know, five years, just by year. Because I think it's important for us, I think we, are we seeing with more households that we're picking up, higher participation? And I'm also very curious about that, the contamination rate, if, if that's captured in those reports.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll go through and pull that information and provide as much of the responsive information there. Yeah.
All right. We will now, thank you. We will now go into the vote for EA 23-0212, David Markosi.
Second.
Moved by Middleton. Second by Conway.
Chair Schleifer.
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett is absent. Mr. Costello is absent. Vice President Middleton. Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance.
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway.
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, there are five votes and a affirmative, no negative. This nomination could go to second read at the December 4th council meeting.
All right. So next up, EA 23-0213, Elizabeth Cornish. Do we have a motion? Moved by Middleton. Second by Torrance.
Chair Schleifer.
Aye.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett and Mr. Costello are absent. Vice President Middleton.
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos.
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance.
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway.
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, there are five votes and a affirmative, no, no negatives. We can go to second read on Monday.
Thank you. Does anybody have any further questions for DPW related to recycling? All right. Thank you, guys, for joining us today. We will now be in recess, and hopefully we don't need to resume this, and we can get the information requested. Otherwise, we will be back. Thank you.